Hold on, I'm just trying to get.
Turn this.
Trying to make sure I have the right packet in front of me so I don't do things from last week. That's the one. Okay, we'll get started in about 30 seconds. Are they ready in the?
He says yes.
He's good, okay.
Mm-hmm.
You do?
I was getting ready to knock on the window.
Oh. He does three creepy knocks, you know. Go snuck three times.
I was just looking at her. Because.
Can't say.
Well, that's a great endorsement.
We're sitting here and it's not part of the meeting, so.
Oh, you're gonna say something during the meeting?
Oh, I could, yeah.
I don't. Well, I just said we need some help because we don't know who to turn that on.
I don't know. I guess that's okay. I left it upstairs in the conference room, but that's okay. They won't be bothered.
Are we gonna be able to comment on them or do we just vote?
I think we can talk about them.
Comment? Yeah, I'd like to comment, yeah.
Are we good?
Hi, Sunny.
Hi.
How are you?
Okay.
Ready anytime you are.
Okay, we'll call to order the Grand Travers County Board of Commissioners' meeting for Wednesday, September 20th, 2017. Will please stand. We're gonna have, if you don't mind, a moment of silence for another firefighter who passed away about 10 days ago. That was Captain Wade Hannah. He was fire chief for many, many years and very well-loved in the community. So we'll have a moment of silence before the pledge. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Sarah. Lathrop?
Yep.
Mayor?
Here.
Gorkolet?
Here.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Klaus?
Here.
Crawford?
Here.
Ashau Johnson is excused. Okay. We have approval of minutes. We have the minutes of September 6th, 2017. Are there any changes or comments or anything to those? Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes as provided.
I'll second it.
Moved by Commissioner Wheelock, seconded by Commissioner Mayor. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now's our chance for first public comment. The rules, please, Sarah.
Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provision of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. Any person wishing to address the board shall state his or her name and address. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding time needed to answer Commissioners' questions, if any. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. The chairperson may at his or her discretion extend the amount of time any person is allowed to speak. Public comment will be solicited during the two public comment periods noted in Rule 5.4, Order of Business. However, public comment will generally be received at any time during the meeting regarding a specific topic currently under discussion by the board. Members of the public wishing to comment should raise their hand or pass a note to the clerk in order to be recognized and shall not address the board until called upon by the chairperson.
Thank you. With that, do we have any public comment? Yes, sir.
I'm Rick Burkholder, 932 Telly Street, I'm a Traverse City resident. Later on in your agenda, you're going to be asked to approve a memorandum of agreement over the Tart Trail extension on the west side of Boardman Lake. And this is the fifth or sixth time I've been in front of several public bodies over the last six months asking one question. Why does it cost $2.5 million more and it's 25% shorter than the same trail across the street? I mean, it is ludicrous to not answer that question. What happened with stuff like this is what happened with the Eighth Street Sharette. It's what happened with the design of Garland Street. It's what happened with West Front Street, the landing strip. More or less secret steering committee is formed. They do pretty much what they want to do, recommend it, nobody challenges what they say, and you get it. And that's just wrong. I mean, if nothing else, ask why the expense of the extension to South Airport Road? Why the extra span over the water for bird watchers? I mean, ye gods, come on. Somewhere along the way, I read that at the park, Dally Park, you're gonna put in a fishing platform. I like to fish, so I went and I was talking with Mike Sutherland, who I'm friends with, about the fishing platform. And he says, "Well, we got one already on the river." And he said, "You know, see those swans out there about 200 yards?" Said, "Between here and there, it's knee-deep." So ask the question, what's the point of a fishing platform if the water's knee-deep? So if you want to approve this memorandum of agreement, you know, go ahead, but at some point, this money's gonna trickle back if it even happens, through all these grants, brownfield money, which remember, that's, whether it's a grant or brownfield money, it's still tax money. And somebody's gonna ask us, is this the right way to spend this amount of money? Even though everybody wants the trail around there. There's so many appendages on it, they're totally unnecessary. Is it worth the expense at this time? And you all know and remember Ross Richardson, who's both a county commissioner and a city commissioner. And the first time this came up, he says, "Wait a minute, put the brakes on. Can we break this down and pay for it incrementally if we're not comfortable with what's happening?" And that was kind of, was on the table then. Then unfortunately, he had to leave because of family issues. And since that time, this has gained momentum that this design is the perfect outcome that, quote, "everybody wants." And I don't think that's true. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other chances for public comment? Okay, we will move on to the approval of the agenda. Do we have any items that we need to add or remove, Sunny?
Madam Chairman, I would like to add a conflict of interest disclosure for Commissioners due to a small job that we did for the Sheriff's Department back in May that has been unable to be processed or payment because I didn't get permission from the County Board to do the work.
Okay, so we can add that as new business A. Ron?
I would like to remove.
We're not removing from the consent calendar. Oh, I'm sorry, remove an agenda item?
From the agenda, right. I'd like to remove 10B, just that it'd be nice to discuss with all Commissioners present. That's all right?
She'd like to remove that?
Correct, and put it on at a later date.
Put it on a later date?
Yep.
Can we remove the traveling conference cost part? Because I'm ready to talk about the NACO membership part today.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Yep.
We'll see how that goes. Anybody else? Cheryl, do you have, look like you have a comment or question on that?
No, I just, I'm not sure that we're all gonna be here all at the same time. So I mean, how do we determine when we're gonna talk about this? Everybody has to be here before we can talk about it?
Just saying, just like to.
I think that, if possible, it's an important concept, I'd like to have us all here. So, um, that's just the way I feel.
Okay. Any other changes to the agenda? Okay, do we have a motion?
A motion to?
To accept the agenda as amended?
Oh, I'll make the, I make the motion to accept the agenda. As.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Lathrop, supported by Commissioner Klaus. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have an agenda. And we move on to the consent calendar. Sarah, please.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one commission motion without discussion. Any member of the commission, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted, receive and file or approval, is approved by a single commission action adopting the consent calendar. All information identified on the consent calendar can be viewed in its entirety at www.grantavers.org. A, receive and file. One, Grand Travers County, or Grand Travers Conservation District, August 2017 report. Two, Michigan State University Extension Monthly Report. Three, Genesee County Resolution Regarding Great Lakes. Four, Staff Report, September 2017. Five, Budget to Actual Revenue and Expenditure Report. B, approvals. One, Fiscal Year 2017 Budget Amendments. Two, August 2017 Claims Approval. Three, Renewal of Child and Adolescent Health Center Grant Agreement, Kingsley. Four, Renewal of Child and Adolescent Health Center Grant Agreement, Youth Health and Wellness Center. Five, Morgue Facility Use Agreement. Six, Extend Phone System Maintenance Agreement.
Okay, do any Commissioners want anything removed from the consent calendar and discussed? Cheryl?
Under, excuse me, under B, numbers three, four, and six.
Three, four, and six. Okay. Anybody else? Anybody from Administration need anything moved from the consent calendar? Anyone from the public? Who would entertain a motion?
Madam Chairman, I'd move to approve the consent calendar as provided.
I'll second that.
Moved by Commissioner Wheelock, seconded by Commissioner Mayor. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Move on to Special Orders of Business, Board of Canvassers Appointments. Sarah can explain this better than I can, please.
Sarah will try to explain this better than she can.
Yes. I can explain it, but.
So on your desk are ballots. It's a, because it's an open meeting, it's an open balloting process, so your choices will be known. You need to vote on both sides of the column. We need both Republican and Democrat. The Board of Canvassers, appointees, the nominees are provided to us from the party chairs. They send us a letter with the names. It's up to the Board of Commissioners to choose who they would like to sit on the Board of Canvassers.
So we vote for one in each column?
One in each column, please.
And we will pass them down and return them to you. And then this will come back to us later in the agenda, and she'll let us know what the results are. Yes, Dan?
Are we allowed to comment on this?
Sure.
Okay. I wanna campaign for Karen Goodrich and Elizabeth Wayland. They're the incumbents. They've done a good job. They both want to do this, and I'm gonna vote for them.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, so fill out your ballots.
I assume that Sarah collected the ballots before the meeting because I was running late, so I just handed yours in.
Oh, okay. We'll pass them on down, and we'll make sure Sarah gets them, and it'll come back later on in the agenda, and we will appoint.
Sometimes it starts on the ballot and you check it and get it in.
Early voting, it's considered okay.
Vote early and vote often, right?
Yeah.
Vote early, vote often.
I try to do that every November.
Is that everybody's? Yes. Okay. Thank you, Sarah. Moving on, we have the items removed from the consent calendar, B, three, four, and six. Cheryl?
I'd like to take three and four together if I could, since they're basically the same issue, so.
And here comes Wendy.
I assume Wendy can answer the questions on that.
Okay.
Number three is with regard to K-Town, correct? The Kingsley facility. And then number four is a facility that appears to be, it's located on the TBA ISD campus? Yep, yep, yep. And my question was, what are the numbers that are served in K-Town? Do you have any idea of the number of clients that are served? Off the top of my head? Well, it doesn't have to be the top of your head, but I mean, I assume you wrote the grant, so you'd probably have some idea. I did not write the grant. Some of our staff wrote the grant. But that is the reason we've had a reduction after having multiple years of just a lower caseload than we do at our other site and the not having enough to meet the full adolescent clinic minimum. That's why. Well, it still has a budget of $320,830. So I'm curious, how many clients in primarily Kingsley is what this, is the service area for, is that correct? Primarily, yes. Okay, so you don't, you don't actually have any idea how many they see for that? And if you don't, you can get back to me with the numbers. Honestly, I can look. We have, I have 35 programs, so I don't remember that. I'm sorry, there what? I said I have 35 programs at the Health Department, so this is one of them, and I honestly don't remember the. So you wouldn't have the numbers either? I have the numbers available, like I could get to it right now on my phone probably, but we do a monthly scorecard with metrics, and so we measure all that. I just don't have it in my brain right now. So same answer for the Youth Health and Wellness Center on Parsons Road. Okay, what I found interesting about the budgeted numbers was I see for K-Town, which is Kingsley, there's $6,000 budgeted for birth control. Yep. And then when I look at Youth Health and Wellness Center. There's nothing. There's $0 scheduled for birth control. The Kingsley location, and these were, these were established based on input from the community and the schools, so the Kingsley one is not located on school property, so we are allowed to have Title X funds and do reproductive health services there. Okay. At the TBA ISD clinic, they are referred to the main Health Department or even referred out to the Kingsley Center. So is the $6,000 for birth control, is that actually birth control pills? Or is that $6,000 worth of condoms? Because I'm just trying to wrap my head around how many people we're serving out there and how much birth control they need. Because that seems like a lot. It's a lot more expensive to have a baby as a teenager. That's not, you know, if I had a number to, you know, I mean, if there's 100 people you're serving, that's a lot of money. If there's 2,000, that's different. So, so I want to say Kingsley is somewhere around 600 or 700 that we serve, but. Okay. I don't want to be quoted on that number without looking, but I, but it's not like 100. Okay. So the 6,000 for birth control would be a combination of different forms of birth control. Okay. As well as potentially some condoms, but normally condoms come from another source that we distribute throughout the Health Department. Well, because I saw in your, in your, one of your other reports, a significant amount of condoms being distributed. Like hundreds of thousands of condoms being distributed. While we receive them and we're in this brand-new Wear One campaign that all of the northern, all the Health Departments in Northern Michigan and throughout the rest of the state are actually promoting. Yeah, I saw where, I thought it was interesting that the condom distribution centers, Kill Kenny's Irish Pub, Tilly's Party Store and Disco, The Laughing Buddha, Sidetracks, and Francisco's Market and Deli, and I just was. Those are, those are new partners, and we have to go where people who need them are and the places that they hang out and trying to get our target population. So that's where the younger population who engage in potentially risky sexual behaviors are, so. Okay, and then at the Kind Palooza at NMC, over 1,200 condoms were distributed. So that seems like a pretty hefty contribution, too, so, yeah. Okay, all right, so those are my questions on number three and number four, so I'd move to accept those as presented.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Gorkolet, supported by Commissioner Klaus. Any further discussion on those two? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Move on to B6, Phone System Maintenance Agreement.
Okay, so number six. My question was, why were there no bids?
So this is a current agreement that we have with the provider. It's a renewal for a one-year extension. It's a maintenance agreement. If we do not extend the agreement, we will not have phones or voicemail services.
No, I understand that there were three years on the contract which have expired, and now at the expiration point, we're extending, being asked to extend it for another year rather than bidding it out.
Well, there was a clause within the agreement that allowed for that to occur, so that would be the one reason. The second is that we just didn't have time to be able to do it. It was discovered late that the, that the existing agreement was expiring, and we needed to renew it in order to maintain services.
So who's in charge of keeping track of when things need to be renewed?
That is a good question that needs to be addressed by the county. As an entire organization, this one did fall to our IT department, specifically into the telephone area of that department.
Thank you. I would move to accept this one as well.
Okay.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Gorkolet, supported by Commissioner Klaus. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on to the Health Department, starring Wendy again. We have an agreement between Benzy Lelandaw District Health Department and Grand Travers County Health Department for, the topic of the day, apparently, reproductive health provider services.
So move.
Oh, you're gonna, okay. Do we have a second? Moved by Commissioner Gorkolet, supported by Commissioner Lathrop. Discussion. Any questions for Wendy on this particular agreement?
Can I just?
Anything you want to say, yes.
I just wanted to add that we're part of the Northern Michigan Public Health Alliance, and we always are looking for ways to share potentially cost savings. This particular position originally was a nurse practitioner position, and both of our Health Departments, that was difficult to fill due to recruitment and payment and the fact that both of us were trying to recruit. We were trying to recruit, say like a .8 FTE, and they were trying to recruit a .2 FTE, and they had a longtime nurse practitioner who wanted to retire. And so we decided it'd be easier if we could combine the two, same kind of training, same, same staffing. And we actually opened it up and found a physician assistant who met that.
Good.
Yep, so that's what that is.
Okay, sounds good to me. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Community Development. That is Jean. Memorandum of Understanding Boardman Lake Trail Loop. Is that you, Jean? Okay.
The agreement before you is a four-party agreement between the city, county, Garfield Township, and Tart Trails. And there's no fiduciary commitment to the county. It's just sitting at the table to be able to achieve the goals of building the Boardman Lake Loop around. The task that the county has been identified within the memorandum of understanding is basically being the recipient of any grants that we are successful in being awarded. We have received previously a coastal zone management grant, and we have four grants that are out there that will know probably in January of '18 whether we are the recipient or not. And then we would work with the city, the township, and the county and Tart to administer those as well.
Okay. Tom?
Can you address Mr. Burkholder's comment from public comment?
I can start, and I'm sure Chris Cushman from Tart Trails is here as well. And the design is not done. So right now, we are doing the construction engineering so we can go out for bids to know what, what the cost will be. We have an estimate, but it depends on what will come in and how the trail will be designed. Right now, the design was that we'll have a cantilever, so it's kind of, is over the water. We're looking at moving the railroad, railroad tracks over. That may save some money as well, so it's really, we're not sure what the final costs are going to be.
Yeah, because the west side of the lake, the terrain along the shore is a lot different than it is on the east side. And I would assume that increases the construction costs considerably.
Mm-hmm, it does.
But I've, I've heard him speak in public comment at city meetings, too, and then he doesn't seem to, you know, no one seems to explain it afterwards. So his comments just kind of lay there, and nobody, nobody addresses them.
We don't have the final numbers yet, for one. And we have to have the final numbers, and it is a more difficult terrain based on where the location of the trail is.
Cheryl?
Would it be fair to say that based on the numbers that come in, as far as the grant requests and stuff, that that might impact the final design as well? I mean, are you gonna build based on the money, or is the money tied to the design?
The money is tied, is, will be tied to design. There's not many, there's not a lot of room to build that trail. So that's what we're trying to get to right now. So we're hoping to offset the cost with the grants as much as we can.
Well, I would hope we don't spend much money moving the railroad tracks that don't be used.
That's a pretty good point. Anybody else?
Well, those, those tracks do get used, don't they?
I would say that you never get rid of railroad tracks.
They might someday.
Once the infrastructure is gone, it's gone, and you never know when they'll come back.
Yeah, I know, I had heard in the past, and I don't know if it's recorded anywhere, that, that they were gonna, instead of having a track all the way around the lake, that they were gonna kind of stick to using one side or the other. Is that true, or did they make a decision on that?
They have not made that decision.
So that'd be, that'd be good for us to know, too.
For a community, it would be.
Yeah.
It's gonna take some time for M.D. to determine.
We're setting on a piece of property for the potential construction of a Y which would be vacated at the end of 14th and 15th Street. We've been setting on that piece of property for close to 10 years now?
I think five.
Long time, anyway, you know, and, you know, there's no discussion at this point yet whether they're gonna ever construct the Y. And now there's some question whether or not the property that we selected and purchased will be adequate for the Y, too. So it was promoted, it was approved, and that was where it was gonna be. We purchased the piece of property, and, you know, Jean can tell you, we had to make a flying trip to Lansing to get the paperwork signed just to meet the deadline date. And here we are down the road quite a ways, and we haven't moved one iota toward creating the Y, and now there's discussion whether or not the site that we have is adequate anyway.
Cheryl?
I would move to authorize the county administrator to execute a memorandum of understanding with the City of Traverse City, Garfield Township, and Traverse Area Recreation and Transportation Trails for the Boardman Lake Trail Loop, which commits each party to tasks to mutually achieve goals to build and finish the Boardman Lake Trail Loop.
I hope Sarah got all that. She will.
I read it word for word off of the.
It's word for word. You're welcome.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Gorkolet, supported by Commissioner Klaus. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, thank you. Old unfinished business. Do we have the results?
We do.
Of the election?
I'm sorry? Under the Michigan Communities Act, secret ballots could be an issue by the tribal council.
It's not secret, she's got it. We're good. Don't worry, Andy. Yes?
So, interesting results.
Uh-oh.
Yeah.
Because there's six of us, right?
Right, guess what? We have a tie for the Republican nominee.
Uh-huh.
But we do have a clear Democratic nominee, and that would be Elizabeth Wayland.
Okay, so what are the rules that we do?
I was just conferring with civil council.
So you have to, you have to make the appointment within 10 days of your annual meeting? Your annual meeting is actually today, so you have 10 days from today. You have a, you have a joint meeting next Wednesday with the Parks and Recreation Commission. My, my suggestion is schedule a meeting either before or after that meeting and break the tie.
Okay.
At that meeting.
Revote?
You don't revote, you pull names out of a hat.
Oh, pull the names out of a hat?
Oh, really?
One or the other?
Wow.
Oh.
Interesting. Interesting.
I would have thought we would just ask the person who wasn't here who they would vote for.
Those two names go on the hat.
Okay. Nice.
Can we divulge who the two names are? Do you want to keep that? I'm just.
Sarah, it's not secret.
Right, it's not secret. The tie is between Karen Goodrich and Anna Mauser.
Oh, okay.
Three to three.
Who are the two again?
Karen and Anna.
Karen and Anna.
Okay.
Okay. So, yes, we will have a meeting about 15 minutes before the parks meeting next Wednesday.
Can we have a motion to accept the results of the Democratic?
Yeah, go ahead.
Do we have comment first?
Sure.
Okay. Motion first.
Let Cheryl make the motion first.
That we accept the vote with regard to the Democratic appointment for canvasser of Elizabeth Whalen.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Gorflet, seconded by Commissioner Lathrop. Tom?
Okay. When the election happened in November of 2016, I was elected as a member of the Green Party, and that was the first time that had happened in this county. It obviously doesn't happen very often. But just for the history on this and why only two political parties are involved in this process. Two board members are selected from each of the two political parties receiving the greatest number of votes in the last election for Secretary of State, which is also common in getting ballot access, too. It's a percent of the number of people who voted for the Secretary of State. So that position, as often as it comes up, is used as a weight in these things. Board members serve four-year terms. The terms are staggered, so the term of the Republican seat and the term of the Democratic seat expire in February of odd-numbered year. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah. But I just wanted to point out that, you know, there's more than one political party. I think there were at least six for president in the last election. But it is based on the number of people and their political party who vote for the Secretary of State of the state of Michigan in which this is all decided, just for a point of reference.
Okay, thank you.
I feel smarter already.
There you go.
Thank you, Tom.
It's like civics.
It is, it's good, it's a good thing.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The other, Wendy has something else to say.
I would just like to answer your question.
Oh, there you go.
Before I leave. So the threshold for the difference in the reimbursement on the grants is 800 unduplicated clients. And I don't have the exact number, but I can tell you that the youth health and wellness center at TBA ISD sees over 800 unduplicated clients a year and about 1,275 visits total. And K-Town sees less than 800 unduplicated, but they have about the same number of visits because they're a little more intensive on the behavioral health component. So there's people getting multiple visits there.
Nice. Thank you so much.
Yep.
Yep, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to B. What's left of it is the NACO membership. I gave everybody a little pamphlet, 10 good reasons to belong to NACO, and a flash drive that has all kinds of really good information about National Association of Counties. What I did was I did go to NACO in February and also in July. And I spoke to them at the membership center there. And because we had, our membership had lapsed, I think in 2015 and 2016, not sure about 15, but definitely in 16, the membership dues were not paid. So they said, here's what we would like to do. We would like you back as NACO members, and we will take your conference fees that you paid in February and your conference fees that you've paid here in July, and we'll call that good for the membership for the rest of the year.
Nice.
So we are now full-fledged NACO members for the rest of the year. Also, next year, when we pay our NACO membership for next year, that will be considered our first full year of membership, so that anyone at the county who would like to attend NACO in, it's in February, and there's one in July. In February, it's in Washington, D.C. In July, it's in Nashville next year. The conference fees are waived. Those are pretty pricey conference fees. I think in February, it was eight something, and in July, it was a little over 700. So because that will be our first full year of kind of new membership, they extend that offer to us for next year. So anyone that would like to go from the county at all would be able to go, conference fees paid. Travel is extra, obviously, but the conference fees would be paid. So I just wanted to let you know that I worked that out, and there's all kinds of good information on there about what NACO does for us at the federal level, same things that MAC does for us at the state level. They are our lobbyist group. They are the ones that, you know, help us with issues, help get to the right people in Washington, which is important. So, yes, Dan?
What's it cost to, for our county to belong to NACO?
It's about $1,800.
$1,800 bucks, and that covers all of us, right? Makes us all board members?
We're all members.
Okay.
Yep, just like MAC does.
Okay. And why did we not pay it in the past?
I have not found out why. I don't know why.
We've always paid it in the past, but in 2016, we did not.
We just did not. The bill came, and it just.
Didn't happen to do it?
It just was not paid.
It was not in the budget.
So, like I said, I've been to two of these conferences. I think it's very important. I think that's why I brought these back for you to, you know, look at it, and it is important. They do a lot of really good things for county commissioners all across the country. We need to have a voice at the federal level.
I thought this was a keychain.
It's not. There's a lot of really good stuff on there. They sent us a box with a whole bunch of those, so I have a few more.
Very cool.
Yes, and that, so I think that we'll find that they're very, very useful, and like I said, in the same way that MAC is useful. So I wanted to let everybody know that I worked that out, so that my conference fees for those two conferences actually go to pay, went to pay our membership, and then anyone who wants to go next year can go, and it's paid. So, any questions? Okay, we will move on. Commission on Aging update. We all received a commission on aging update on Monday, and I wondered if anybody had any questions or comments. Jen, looks like you're going to say something.
I can walk through a couple of things. We have just a couple of highlights in here if you'd like.
Sure.
The first is that we're pleased to announce that we now have a commission on aging director. We've extended, and the candidate has accepted the offer for that. Her name is Cynthia Keenland. She comes to us from Chicago, Illinois, has 20-plus years of experience as an RN and in the healthcare industry. She has a Master of Science in Nursing, Bachelor of Science in Nursing, and comes very well recommended from her peers. We are excited. She'll be starting on October 18th, and COA staff gave an applause today, so they're very excited to have her on board.
Okay.
So that was the first one.
All right, other highlights?
We've noted for a little over a month and a half, I think, that we've been having some meetings with the Pavilions on potential partnerships. And I've highlighted some of those, including training and education. We've been discussing the opportunity to share in their certification, training programs. We've talked about the relationship of the director and the structure of that position that we have with the COA, and how it could potentially benefit from a partnership with the Pavilions. We've also talked about utilizing and jumping onto their electronic medical record system by purchasing a module with them, which would streamline the process and provide some efficiencies for the COA, as well as it's a proven and tested system that already exists in this community. And then we also threw around the idea of some co-location and being able to utilize their training room, as well as some of the additional things that the Pavilions has to offer. And so I wanted to ask the board if they would be interested in forming an ad hoc committee to kind of walk through some of these ideas and thoughts at a more deeper level to answer some questions, do a little more research and digging. So I wanted to throw that out there to the board today. I had a question related to staffing. We currently do have three vacant positions. I'll put a plug out there, we are looking for universal aides. It's www.grantaverse.org, and you can see the job descriptions for the universal aide positions there. We have interviewed a couple of candidates. One did not show up, another one just was not a good fit for the position. We do have more interviews on Friday of this week. So we are continuing a full recruitment process for that on a one-to-one basis. We have not eliminated any positions. We are looking to create a team, an office coordinator position within the department that will help coordinate work within the office. And we did have a temporary staff member who accepted a position full-time at another organization. And so we're working to do a lot of cross-training with those office staff and really make those operations better there. I've included an update of the current expenditures for the budget by the program areas. And then one of the other things that was asked about was feedback that we've been getting from employees and clients. And that's something that I've been personally committed to doing, is seeking feedback from the employees and really have worked to open up the communication with them. As a result, under Mary Heberty, there was a client services agreement that was developed as a result of some staff concerns that conditions in homes might not always be safe, or staff might not be treated respectfully in some cases. And so we developed an agreement to go out and explain to clients the relationship for staff, as well as the relationship and expectations for clients. And so that's a mutual agreement that we have that clarifies those staffing concerns. We recently completed a client assessment process. We had been using a form that was over 20 years old that had now been updated and had been collecting some information that it probably shouldn't have been, that didn't apply to all of the clients. And so our RN supervisor and program supervisor teamed up for a couple of weeks and went out on joint visits to a number of clients and have worked to provide some recommendations on that assessment process. And hopefully that'll streamline it, make sure that the information that we're collecting is necessary and relevant. Again, we've created the team leader groups, which are a direct communication for field staff to be able to communicate any concerns or challenges that they may be having. We've revised a number of policies related to employee time off and brought in some more training. Beta came in and gave a great presentation to staff a couple of weeks ago related to how seniors access public transit. And so that information can then be carried back to senior citizens in our community. And there are some opportunities available there for some discounted rides. Today, Chief Jim Tuller with the Traverse City Fire Department gave a presentation on the Hoarders Task Force and some of the work they're doing. Staff go into environments that can be challenging, where there are some issues that may need some additional assistance, and so that's an additional resource for staff. We've also had a number of presentations and have included in our weekly meetings HIPAA compliance training. So we're really working on that. We've also offered staff an opportunity to participate voluntarily in a Myers-Briggs personality test, where you go out and you find out what your preferences are and how you can best communicate, you know, with your peers and coworkers, as well as with your clients, and you can even apply it to your family. We had 19 staff members that participated in that, and so that was an excellent process, and we've done some follow-up training related to that as well. We've had requests from staff for specific equipment, and that's been something that we've approved and authorized, a dump truck loader, which will prevent injury to our home tour staff who are out there working hard every day. And then also, staff have requested specific supplies, such as kneepads, which have been necessary. And so we've authorized those. We continue to work on our issues of HIPAA compliance, our software purchase. We are almost ready to go on that, working through some last final details. We do have a preferred vendor. We've done several presentations to the team leader group, as well as the supervisors, and then also rolled it out to the full field staff in two different presentations to give them an opportunity to see the software, to get excited about it. And then they also had a access and password so that they could go in and play with it. And a couple of the tablets have been around town, seeing whether or not they, how well they work and receive wireless signals and things like that. So that's been exciting. Some of that is also contingent upon our conversation with the Pavilions, which is the request for the ad hoc committee to discuss the potential partnership with the Pavilions. One of the other questions that always seems to be out there is this idea of a waitlist. And I've decided that we shouldn't call it a waitlist. It's more of a customer queue, because it's not like you're waiting in line for dinner at a restaurant, and you're immediately ready to eat, you're hungry. We have a situation where clients have to come into a process, they come into a queue, and so there are certain steps that have to occur. This is something that, as we continue to peel back the layers of the onion, as we turn over every rock, we continue to find new issues and new things. And so this is something that we do need to continue to work towards. But I was asked to provide some specific data and information. And so there's actually one person on the home healthcare list that's in the queue for services, and we'll need to complete an assessment on that individual. There are four individuals that are completed and waiting for homemaker aide services. And then this is the area that we need to look at, is that we have a number of individuals, 35, that have requested an assessment. And so we need to work on our process with staff to be able to make sure that we're getting out in an appropriate amount of time and being able to move those to a position that they're ready. But there's also that window of, you know, they can't be ready too early because if something changes, you know, with the client, we're going to have to go out and do a reassessment. So we're working on that as we bring up to full staffing levels. I expect that that will go down. And we do have seven clients that have an assessment scheduled and/or has been completed for our community living support program. You know, the other thing to remember is that clients go on and off this list, they go on hold. It depends a lot upon their needs, which is an ever-changing situation. So, and then we continue to work with an HR consultant to address some of the issues at the Commission on Aging. This was done at the request of our HR director. Due to the knowledge and experience and involvement at the COA, the consultant experience and knowledge is invaluable to moving things forward there and looking at the organization. So we continue with that. We also, I was also asked about the status of the advisory board. As I noticed and noted before, we don't have the advisory board, anyone for them to advise, so it's a little bit of a challenge. So there has been a recruitment process ongoing. I would expect, you know, once the director gets on the ground and running, that the advisory board could be formed. You know, it's a board appointment process. If you chose to, you know, take the existing applications and appoint them now, you could do that. That really is a board process. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Tom?
Okay, going back, you started on a list of open positions that you were trying to fill. I think you only said one, the universal aides.
There's three, yeah. There are three. We've, what we've done is we've gone from.
Just three universal aides?
Yes, that's correct.
And an office person.
The office person actually was a temporary position that we've chosen not to refill and are, through the cross-training, going to be able to work with staff to be able to do that. And I believe that the software system will actually promote greater efficiencies by eliminating paper and streamlining communication.
The universal aides, is that related also to the queue, the new waitlist?
Yeah, absolutely. The more staff we have, the more clients we can serve.
Okay, so we really need them?
Yes, absolutely.
To solve a part of that problem?
Yep.
And what about the Pavilions board? What have they said about, you know, having some of the shared facility?
You know, I haven't talked with the Pavilions board themselves. I've met with Cory Hanson, the CEO, as well as Rose Coleman, and actually Vicki last Friday with them about that. And so we've had those discussions at that level. I think, you know, as a next step, if we can work through some of the initial questions that our board may have, you know, bringing together both boards may be an option, should you desire to move in that direction.
Yeah, I ask because I've seen other things happen this year where it seems like the side we're talking about, you know, our side, is, you know, we're all like, we all know what we're thinking, but we're talking about another group of people, and they don't know what we're talking about.
Yeah.
So it seems uneven, so.
Our conversations with Cory and Rose, I believe that they have communicated with their board regarding the discussions that we've been having. And yeah, Carol, you sit on that board.
Yes.
So well aware of.
They have updated their board on, yeah, on the ongoing discussions.
And lastly, we had a consultant, I think, involved in the hiring of the new director?
Correct.
Yeah, is she complete now, is she finished?
The director has been selected.
No, but I mean, is the consultant finished?
No.
Oh. How long does this go on?
You know, I don't have it, and I wish all the problems at the COA would go away. But as we continue to uncover things, you know, and work through issues, that expertise and knowledge is very helpful.
Okay. I would rather see our HR director take over those duties than have a consultant.
Yeah, unfortunately, the, you know, we were asked by the HR director to retain the consultant to be able to assist because the HR department has, one, it's not fully staffed right now. We are down a personnel specialist. And there are some internal issues within the HR department that we need to work through before we'd be able to extend those services on to other county departments, such as the Commission on Aging.
Yeah, so lastly, I just want to know when it's going to end. You know, there must be a term or something. It can't go on indefinitely, the relationship with the consultant, so.
I believe there is a $30,000 ceiling limit on the professional services agreement.
Some kind of limits, time, money, yeah. Good idea.
$30,000 over what period of time?
I don't know that there is a period of time on it. I would have to go back and review it.
Because I know that person's received over $150,000 in her capacity as a consultant for the county in the last two years. So $30,000 seems like a number that has no rational relationship to anything.
Well, it's actually related to our purchasing policy under the agreement that we signed in, I believe it was probably July of this year, for those extended services, so.
So $30,000 is the budgeted amount that you have authority to enter into an agreement without seeking our participation?
It is professional services, yes.
Okay, so when that $30,000 is used up, then you have authority to extend another $30,000, is that correct?
That's a question we've been actually working through. I don't know that there's a clear answer within our existing purchasing policy. It might be something that we want to look at.
Oh, I think we will be looking at it, absolutely.
Okay, we can look at that. If it's not clear, then it should be. Any other questions on the update?
Good job.
Thank you very much. I believe it answered a lot of questions that have been hanging out there, so. All right, we're going to move on to new business. Sunny, we did, you did some work for us.
This is one that kind of fell through the cracks on everybody's part, I think. Back in May, I believe if my memory is correct, on May 8th Deputy Fossil brought a target from the shooting range, literally a steel rod with steel targets off from it where when they hit it, they spun around. A couple of the targets were broken off. He brought it out, dropped it off, we welded it, they come and picked it up the next morning. I spent the Sheriff's Department a bill for, through our company, for 20 minutes of target repair, any amount of $25. The following Friday, the invoice was mailed to the Sheriff's Department and because of whatever process we probably skipped along the way, I didn't notify the Board of Commissioners 10 days prior to doing the work or immediately thereafter. So this bill's been floating around in somewheres on somebody's desk until recently when I started trying to figure out why it was still open. And, you know, you can see from a copy of the invoice that it was approved by the Sheriff's Department a long time ago, but it hasn't been approved by, for payment because it takes 2/3 of the vote of this Board of Commissioners to authorize the shit Grand Traverse County to pay Wheelock and Sons welding $25 for a target repair.
Dan?
I'd like to make a motion that we do accept this bill and pay it and there's a second I want to make a comment on it.
Okay.
Support. I'd like to say that we got, that's a good deal and it's nice to have a guy like this who can do this stuff for us.
It is.
Yeah.
Absolutely. So we need five. Can we do a roll call on this one? Yes, I think so. Mayor?
Yes.
Gorklet?
Yes.
Wheelock?
I'm staying.
Klaus?
Yes.
Lethrup?
Yeah.
Crawford?
Yes.
You will get your $25.
You got to split it with me though.
Like I said, it kind of falls through the cracks, you know, and the way the summer's been, we've all been very busy and the other day I'm going through all of the past due invoices and this one comes up and it's like, what?
It's like when I treated my dad when he was alive, I told my billing service not to bill him because I didn't want to charge my own dad. Guess who got a bill?
He did.
My dad!
I told him to listen to you.
No, no. You know, he said, "Do I have to pay this?" "No, Dad."
Okay, moving on, we have our other new business.
Oh, I didn't, I just wanted to bring this up as a comment. It's not really, I mean, it's not really new business, but I just wanted to tweak everybody's memory. If we have not yet put together an RFP for auditors for this next year's audit, now would be the time and I just wanted to remind us of that because last year, of course, we found ourselves in a bit of a pickle because it's my understanding from several of my accountant friends that now is the time when all of the CPA firms are setting up their stuff for next year's audit cycle, so.
Jody looks very confident over there, she's all over that.
Hopefully we'll get those RFPs out, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to second public comment. This is our second chance for public comment. No, nobody's running up there, a lot of blank faces. Okay. We have Commissioner Department reports. Anybody? Yes, Rob?
I would just want to make a comment that I was at Grant Township and Mayfield Township this week and they depend on Buckley Fire Department for their services and they approved to purchase some radios. So I brought it up once before that they're paying the surcharge on their phones like everyone else in Grand Traverse County, but they're still having to pay for their radios. So just, just putting it out there.
Okay, thank you. We move on to notices. We're going to have a joint study session with Parks and Recreation next Wednesday at 5:30. We'll not be in this room, we'll be in the training room because there's a lot of Commissioners at that one. It will be, it won't be televised, but it will be videotaped and it will be available online later.
Do we know what we're going to have for an agenda?
Yes, I believe you got a packet.
Okay.
You should have gotten a packet in the email today and so that's out on the website too.
Yeah, this kind of goes back to what I said earlier is that, you know, we were-
We need to cooperate.
Yeah, we need to not be out of step with the other parts of the county, so.
Right, that's the whole purpose of having that joint session, that joint meeting. I also have wanted to let everybody know that the fall cycle for the Grand Traverse County, fall cycle or spring cycle, not sure, one of the cycles, for the Grand Traverse County receiving money from the Grand Traverse Band for the 2% grants, two, three, four, five, there are six entities that through the Board of Commissioners will receive grants from the Grand Traverse Band. One is the Children's Advocacy Center, received $5,000. Project Cherry Tree received $15,000. Child and Family Services Safe Haven Program received $10,000. Traverse At-Risk Boxing received $15,000. Safe Harbor of Grand Traverse, $19,188.15. And Habitat for Humanity received $9,000. So we thank the Grand Traverse Band for those grants. Anything else? Chairman?
Yes.
I just wanted to mention that the Administration and Finance Staff is meeting with all the Department Heads this week and next on budget and it's our intention to have a budget recommendation ready on October 20th and present at a special session to the Board on October 25th, a balanced budget.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All over that. Okay, I don't have an official motion, so I'm going to try this. Oh, I'm sorry. Somebody send that down, please. I just, I need that. I'll give it back after I read it. Okay. You need to go into, I will move and someone else can second. I move that we go into closed session per MCL 15.268H, 15.268C, and 15.268E for the purposes of reviewing attorney-client privileged information related to the county's former medical care facility and months of medical center, as well as discussing with Labor Council, one, contract negotiations for various bargaining units, two, Merck decision on unfair labor practices, charges filed by the POAM, COAM, and TPOAM regarding employee health insurance payment PA 152, and three, Teamsters grievance regarding PA 152.
Can we just clarify that's privileged communication?
I'm sorry, privileged communication. Reviewing attorney-client privileged communication.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Crawford, supported by Commissioner Klaus. We need a roll call vote. Gorklet?
Yes.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Klaus?
Yes.
Lethrup?
Yep.
Mayor?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
We do expect action when we come back into the room. Yes, we do. Yes, we do. Check down this area, please. Okay, so. I'll leave the room. I'm going to bring this.
God, I mean, I thought it was cold in the other room.
Every room we go to is colder.
Oh, shit.
We're all back?
Wow.
Do I have a... I would move that we come out of closed session.
What?
Guys, we're coming out of closed session. Pay attention.
What's that support?
Moved by Commissioner Crawford, supported by Commissioner Klaus to come out of closed session. Roll call vote, please. We're going to do roll call on all of these. So, just to be safe. Willock?
Yes, ma'am.
Klaus?
Yes.
Lathrop?
Yep.
Mayor?
Yes.
Gorfallett?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Okay. So, I move that we approve the attached letter of understanding with Teamsters Local 214 to settle their grievance concerning PA 152 and authorize the board chairwoman to sign the letter of understanding. Moved by Commissioner Crawford, supported by Commissioner Lathrop. Roll call vote, please. Lathrop?
Yep.
Mayor?
Yes.
Gorfallett?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Willock?
Yes, ma'am.
Crawford?
Yes.
Anything else? With that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Yes.